2025 and the time is 6:15 PM. I hereby call to order the workshop of the City Council of the City of Groveton, Florida. And I am turning it over to...
Mayor. Mayor, call.
Jenny.
After the real call.
After the real call. Thank you.
Mayor Keith Keough.
Here.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Fike.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Rosick, excused absence. City Manager Mike Hine.
Here.
City Attorney Leader Drossy Carver, absent. Sergeant at Arms Chief Sean Ramsey. City Clerk Virginia Wright, here.
Okay, thank you Jenny. We have a call. Now I'll turn it over to the City Manager for the Administration Overview and Budget.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to be here this evening. We have the City Manager's Budget, the City Clerk's Budget, and then the City Council Budget to review. The City Manager's Budget shows a reduction of about $56,000, mostly from moving some things around, principally rent. But there are some reductions as we went through it internally. As you can see in the budget detail, there are four employees in the City Manager's office, me, Brenda Toscano, Ashley Wright, and Lisa Cortezzi. Ashley, Lisa, and I are budgeted, I believe, 75% in the general fund, 25% in utilities. Brenda is equally split, since the majority of her work is capital projects in the utilities. So the first page of the budget detail reflects all the personnel service expenses. The second page has the operating expenses. There is an increase in professional services, specifically for Gray Robinson. They had asked for an increase for the last couple of years and were refused. They give $4,000 per month. They've been asking for $5,000. So the $5,000 is reflected in this year's budget. The other is just miscellaneous from time to time. If we have to hire professional services, facilitators, any outside folks, but we haven't used it that much. There's the travel, shipping, postage, some maintenance contracts, printing, other charges. Discretionary fund is simply that, discretionary, and some contingency. You'll note in the other charges, my department is charged for some credit card service fees. We don't use them in my office, but that's just where it landed this year. And I did develop a budget for youth council, and we put $8,000 in it this year. And discretionary is discretionary, and the contingency, office supplies, gasoline, small tools, and equipment are fairly nominal. And that is, that is the City Manager's Budget.
Mr. City Manager, the huddles, what would they fall under?
You will see that later this evening under the council budget.
Oh, okay, okay. And any training, like we've seen in other areas?
Yes, there is education and training for 8,400. There's some subscriptions, memberships. The memberships, I assume, are the international, oh, it's right there, ICMA and FCCMA. And there is some travel. Ashley is going to some FEMA courses. She'll be substituting while Jen Klutz is out on maternity leave during hurricane season. So we're training Ashley up in some of the PIO activities regarding emergency management. Lisa typically does not travel. Brenda has been traveling to FCCMA and ICMA, but both on scholarships this year. She receives scholarships to attend those conferences. And this year's ICMA is in Tampa, so the expenses won't be as extraordinary.
Okay, thank you. Nicely done. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mike, I could hardly hear. What is in the discretionary funds?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, discretionary is same almost as contingency. It's, it's at our discretion. I don't know what we would use that for. In the past, I probably used it for some of the huddle expenses, unforeseen expenses that come up.
Well, could you repeat what you said about Ashley filling in or is she going on travel? I didn't hear.
Yes, sorry about that, Vice Mayor. Yes, Ms. Wright, we are sending to certain FEMA courses in Florida so she can get trained up as a PIO, Public Information Officer. In the unfortunate event where we have to activate our EOC, we need 24-hour coverage. We typically run 12-hour shifts. And since Jen Klutz will be out on maternity leave starting in October, we needed to have a backup so we could have two people handling communication.
And then when Jen comes back, what happens with Ashley?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, there's no change in position. It's just training her so she can fill in, in the event we need somebody during a hurricane, for example.
Okay. And the 56K, I know you talked about the increase to Gray Robinson, but this was going up and down. The 56K in reductions, you moved some monies around. What other were the, what were the other reductions?
Yes, Pam, if you can recall, so one is we moved rent for the annex, which is $5,000 per month out of my department and moved it into non-departmental because it houses HR and other functions. There were some miscellaneous expenses that we didn't feel should be attributed to the manager or that we didn't use. I don't know if you have that worksheet, Pam? I know we had...
Subscriptions and memberships.
Subscriptions and memberships went down, but I think subscription included the copier lease?
That was in, I believe, maintenance contracts.
So small, little stuff, we either reduced.
So what does, what does the other, under the professional services include? That's $13,000, yeah, $13,000. What, what are the other things? Just an idea, not list everyone, but just so...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, if we did any training citywide, it conceivably could come out of there. If we brought in some experts, some consultant, performed some kind of study, and that would be reported out.
Okay. Can I ask you, where does, and I forget her last name, but where in this budget is, is she the consultant, Lori? Where is she in this budget?
She is not in the City Manager's Budget. There was some, if you recall, the discussion under communications, that is where True North, I believe that's the name of the company.
Okay, thank you.
Give me Joe.
I just want a quick, one quick question, Mike. I know you just put a budget out for the youth council of $8,000. Just curious, what, what's that, what are we putting into?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Fike, we've not fully fleshed this out, so I'm not prepared to officially say anything. Other cities to various, for example, awards of scholarship to people who successfully serve a full year on a youth council. We do feed them every meeting, all their light refreshments, so that's some of the expenses. If we had to rent a facility, they're talking about doing a business fair for youth where they pitch ideas to local business owners about enterprises they're thinking of creating or already have. Some of them are rather industrious. So if we needed to support that with some kind of financial backing.
Just a quick question now, now you got my head going. Well, the scholarship, would that be, for instance, if they have identified they're going to go to XYZ college, would it be to that school in particular to help them where they choose to go? I mean, what's the scholarship definitions on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Fike, members of the council, we don't have any of those details worked out at this point.
Fair enough, fair enough. Thank you.
Just, why don't we use the gymnasium? Because we're renting the gymnasium for that fair already. We won't, we already have it, so that would be a probably a great place to have it. But thank you very much.
Would it be a charge?
No, we already rent it.
I know we rent it, but I'm just asking.
Would there be an extra charge for that? No.
There shouldn't be an extra charge unless we stay within the hours that are allotted to us already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wright?
Do you have the PowerPoint? It has to be this. Okay. Okay. Well, this is a little different I'm presenting to you, and thank you for the opportunity. You can't hear? Pardon?
You're probably going to have to speak up and cover it close.
Maybe it's this. Okay, can you hear me?
That's good.
Better? Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity. Just to go over a little bit of what the clerk's office actually does. A little interaction, our responsibilities most are prescribed and defined by the City Charter, Florida statutes, the code ordinances, and the City Manager directives. Our office, we're the information source, and we provide direct service to support the City Council, City Manager, other departments, the public, and sister governmental agencies. And we also provide essential municipal services in the manner, we always strive to be professional, efficient, fair. We strive to be neutral and impartial. The vision, we provide, to provide consistent, high-level services to meet the emerging needs of the citizens, general public, City Council, City Manager staff, and our stakeholders. The mission, to foster civic participation and openness within the city through effective facilitation of transparency and accountability, accountable stewardship of public information and official records. And then the objective, we strive to provide the highest quality of customer service, understanding and helpfulness to our customers, the public, and community, value the diversity and collaboration and opinions and backgrounds in order to create an environment inclusive of everyone, to ensure the public resources and information entrusted or preserved and accessible to the highest standard, and to continue to seek innovative ways to better assist customers, citizens, and the public. So org chart, we have three full-time employees. Sierra Bender is our deputy city clerk, Travis Jackson, our records coordinator, and me, the city clerk. Pam, did you want to take on the budget piece? Thank you. Pardon?
Okay, sorry about that. The city clerk budget historically, in 2022, 2023, there was a total amount of $206,179 spent. $173,150 was in personnel, and $33,029 was in operating expenses. For 2324, their clerk totals were $271,980. $239,803 was in personnel, and $32,178 was in operating. The 2024-25 budget is a total of $387,106, personnel $261,506, and operating $125,600. The year-to-date expenditures through March was a total of $153,280. Through today, we're at $199,197. So we're at 51% of their total budget. The proposed budget for 2025-26 is $446,490, personnel $265,590. The only increase in personnel right now is for 10% increase in the health benefits, no changes in salaries, and no changes in staffing levels. And then operating expenditures is proposed at $18900, which has a $55,300 increase. And operating expenditures is attributed to election expenditures and for subscription-based software.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Excuse me, some of our professional affiliations, Florida Association of City Clerks, International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Lake County Clerks Association, those are local meetings that Sierra and I attend, and Travis does too at times, quarterly, Florida Association of Records Management, Association of Records Management and Administration, and Florida Notaries Association. The Florida Association of City Clerks and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, they kind of go hand in hand. We're members of both. We have to be a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks if we want to get our certification through the Florida Association of City Clerks. So we attend classes for certification. It takes a good three, maybe to five years. Sierra is halfway through, Sierra. And, but we have to apply through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So that's where we get a lot of our education and training. Travis has attended the Florida Records Management. He's been to some training, and we also want to try to bump up some of that training this year. All staff, we're Florida Notaries, which helps a lot. We're always notarizing various documents, so it's important that everyone is a public notary. Administrative support and partnerships, of course, the City Manager, City Council, and boards, all of the departments. We deal with them on a daily basis, the City Attorney, residents, general public, businesses, Lake County Government, other municipalities, excuse me, local community advisory boards, the committees that you all serve on, State Division of Records Management, State of Florida Commission on Ethics, Supervisory Elections, and the State of Florida Elections Commission. So some of these state departments that we've mentioned, we have to provide updates to records in a timely manner. The SOE this year, we're on the canvassing board, although we work with them other years, every other year we're on the canvassing board. So we have to create a resolution. We have to assign three people as the primary and three people as the backup. And so we have several meetings that we have to attend this year and, you know, validate certain things. The Ethics Commission, if we have questions, Form One, we have to ensure that everybody is city officials and city manager and other staff members. You're submitting that into a timely manner. They'll contact me. And we also have a minority disability report that we're required to fill out. The Elections Commission, same. We have to submit the qualifying documents at the end of the election, and we do deal with them on, if we have questions or anything, we deal with them. Records Management, the Division of Records Management, at the end of the year, we have to submit a report that we are in fact in compliance with that. Capital and major expenses, the clerk's office really doesn't have any, we're a support department, so typically they're driven by technology advancement through, and through changes initiated by the governing body, charter, Florida statute, code ordinances, City Manager, and Council directives. Years in review, so I started as a city clerk in 2017. Then we hired one full-time temp. We went on to hire a, changed that to a full-time staff member, and then we hired a part-time staff member, and that position transitioned into a full-time. So currently, that's where we have the three full-time positions. Years in review for 2024-25, we, this year, we implemented the Laserfish training for all departments for scanning city records into the repository. We didn't want to go backwards. I think last year or a few years ago, we had mentioned we were able to destroy almost a million records. That was a big project, but we don't want to go backwards storing box records, so we got everybody on board and acclimated with Laserfish. So each department has records coordinators that scan their documents into Laserfish. We also implemented an annexation log to ensure the city receives tax-based funds. So we have to keep abreast of what ordinances have, you know, properties have been annexed into the city, and by June 1st, we have to submit those to Lake County. So that's just like a little safety net there. And Travis does a good job keeping track of that. We implemented a contracts and agreement log as we were getting busier and busier to keep in, you know, up with, we have to have fully executed documents. So after a council meeting, all of those documents, we're required to get them to the right people, get the signatures. So we also implemented that. So we check that, and we say, hey, we do follow-ups. Where is your document? That we remind everybody, we have to have those fully executed agreements. We also provided records, public records training for newly hired employees. We did purchase, as we said, the Civic Plus Agenda Management. We're in the process of training right now, the clerk's offices, and then we can get everybody else on board. We were able to negotiate, we got the first year for free, and the second year is, as you see on the budget, is $5,300. And then the third year, it just increases by $265, so we did a pretty good job on that. We did hire NCCI consultants to provide scanning services for utility billing, community development. These are permanent records, so there were approximately 63,500 documents were scanned, and staff uploaded these documents into Laserfish, and Travis did a quality control measures. Currently, we're preparing to permitting utility billing and police department records for destruction that have met their retention requirement. And then we provided records management training and public records training to departmental staff. As far as operations, this isn't everything that we do, but I'll try to go through it quickly. So the clerk serves as a qualifying officer for candidates who wish to contend for the Office of Mayor and Council. Serves on the canvassing board for city municipal elections. We maintain the district maps and coordinate redistricting for City Council single-member districts. We also provides, Amida and I provide sunshine law and public records training to newly elected officials. We prepare, compose, and disseminate City Council agenda documents and packets, record and transcribe minutes of the meetings for City Council regular meetings workshops, special meetings budget, and all those above. We oversee the membership status for term expirations for advisory boards to ensure compliance with City Charter and sufficient number of members serving to satisfy meeting qualms. So this includes publication of vacant positions, intake of applications, tabulation of rankings, preparing staff reports and backup material in a timely manner for an upcoming council meeting. Coordinates and codifies the distribution of supplemental updates of charter, City Charter Code, ordinances, and line code. Sierra handles this, that, and she really does a fabulous job. Designated official records custodian, records and information management, which includes indexing, retention, disposition, and destruction. Records management and retention of all official records in compliance with state law. Serves as the city's records management liaison officer with the State of Florida Department of State. Processes all official city public records requests in compliance with Florida Public Law Chapter 119. Travis, he, he also does a really fabulous job. Provides annual records management training and public records training to city staff, maintain and update the public records log. We place legal advertisements, that's required by code ordinances and Florida statutes. We process documents, we're recording, Lake County recording. So we have to... So we have to submit approved annexations, vacations, easements, deeds, liens, and utility and development agreements to the county to be recorded. Sierra does that. And once again, she does a really good job. We maintain and update the annexation log. Custodian of the city, so we have the authority to execute and emboss documents to authenticate validity of city records. Compile, prepares reports and updates information for submission to the State of Florida Commission on Ethics. The Florida Elections Commission and the Division of Records Management serves as a financial disclosure coordinator with the State of Florida Commission on Ethics. And we provide Florida notary services. If we look at some of our goals and performance measures and targets, so public records request, the average turnaround time for responding to public records, 72 hours, 95% of the time. We usually get them done. Travis does a good job unless it's a really large request. Meeting support, timing of meeting minutes and transcription and distribution. Completion deadline, 95% accuracy of minutes reviewed, 99%. We do a pretty good job on that. Public notifications, timing of public meeting notices postings, posted prior, at least 72 hours prior, 100%. Customer service, public satisfaction, timing of this with quality responses. I would say 100%. My staff deals very well with the public and customer service. Elections administration, compliance with legal deadlines for candidate qualification, 100% compliance. Accuracy of election-related documentation, 100%. And kudos to Travis because he's very good at elections. Legal document management, ordinance and resolution numbers assigned, logged and processed, 100%. That may seem a little trivial, but you have to be on point because you absolutely cannot repeat a number. Because if you give an ordinance number out to someone and someone else has it, it could really delay some of your projects or you won't meet your deadlines for funding. So we have to be very cognizant when we're assigning those numbers. Legal and statutory documents recorded with the county within required time, 100%. Percentage of legal documents properly certified and attested to 100%. Records management secure, maintain all city records, 100%. Compliance with retention schedule and public records law, 100%. If we go to statistical measures, you can see in 2024, number of public records processed was 575. We're right at 242 today. Public notices created and published, last year was 111. We're at 81. Number of resolutions, we had 136 last year. This year, we're at 33. Ordinances, 22. And we're at seven this year. Number of meeting workshops, minutes transcribed, 49. We're already at 31 this year. Purchase card invoices processed, 124. And we're at 120. If you look at the efficiency measures, one staff processes public records, 575 for last year. One staff, public notices, excuse me, created and published, 111. One staff assigns and processes 136 resolutions. One staff assigns and processes 22 ordinances. Two staff record, transcribe, complete 49 sets of minutes per calendar year. And one staff completes invoices, 124. So that's kind of our operations in a nutshell. I'm really proud of my staff. They've both come along when, once Sierra started. Sierra really didn't have any experience. And she really picked up very well. And she's done a good job. Travis, the same. He's an asset as well as Sierra with his background in elections. So I think we have a really strong team, and I'm really proud of them. A little bit of history. I'll do this really quick because I just wish I was able to do this. The history of a municipal clerk, there's a couple of things. It goes back to Bible times. And they were called remembritors because they had to use their memory. And it says ancient Greece had a city secretary who read official documents publicly. At the opening of a meeting, one of his first duties was to decree a curse upon anyone who should seek to deceive people. Kind of a little bit funny. And then we also have, back in Bible times, St. Paul and his missionary work in Persia. They owed safety to the action of the town clerk. So if there was something going on and there was a riot, the town clerk could say, stop, and everybody kind of dispersed. And then this other little piece about municipal clerks. It's, you know, it says, no other office in municipal service has so many contacts. It serves the mayor, the council, the city manager, and all administrative departments without exception. All call upon it almost daily for some service or information. Its work is not spectacular. I beg to differ. But it demands versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience. The public does not realize how many loose ends of the city administration this public, this office pulls together. These words were written more than 80 years ago. Today are even more appropriate today.
Thank you. Very nicely done. Ms. Fay?
Jenny, I just, I know we had talked a little bit about Civic Plus Agenda Management. What exactly, can you give me a little more detail on what that actually does?
Yeah. It's an agenda management program. Right now, we're having staff for the agenda packet. They drop their reports and their backup documents in the P drive. So then we have to pull that all together as one document, which is kind of timely. And so with Civic Plus, we will be able to, you know, and staff. All staff is going to be trained. They can create their staff reports and attach their backup documents into the software program. It's printable. You know, we can save it in the Laserfish. It's a much more efficient way to create an agenda packet.
Good. And good negotiating on getting that first year for free. So.
Thank you.
Kudos on that. One other question. It may go to Travis. It's the slide where you were talking about the compliance 100%. Go back to that one. So I don't know. This may be for Travis. One of you will answer it. I'm just curious. It said that 95% of the requests are turned around in the 72 hours. So I'm assuming they're fairly simple requests. What falls out of that 72 hours? What, what kind of request gets cranky there? Just curious.
Larger request. Went to have to send a caution voice for as well.
All right. Thank you. That's all we have.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank your office because aside from the city manager's office, you guys have been the ones that have helped me the most in my first year navigating all of this. So thank you.
Well, we thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Before I, before I make a statement, I want to ask the city manager to make sure I'm not talking out of school. We have had a lot of presentations, workshop presentations. Do you or can you recall how many others have actually produced metrics?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I could go back and look. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, last week, I spoke about IT being an unsung hero. As you were talking about the 21 support and partnerships, relationships that you have, I counted them. There are 21. There are 21 of them. First of all, I want to say kudos for your metrics. That just really makes me want to do the happy dance that you provided metrics and we could see actually what is going on. So thank you. Oftentimes, offices are like sometimes an executive assistant or assistant to whatever. People sometimes poo-poo when they hear clerk this or that. But you guys, I realize that you're the backbone. You know? You're dealing with external stakeholders. You're dealing with internal stakeholders. Unfortunately, your task was dealing with me. But I just have to say that you all provide outstanding service. And I just want to say thank you. Again, thank you for the metrics, which enhances the appreciation of what your office does. So you two are an unsung hero with 21 support and partnerships that you all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We appreciate it. We work as a team.
Thank you. I think it's all been said. I too love this format in that you set goals and then tell us what you did. That's outstanding, and I think it should be copied. Help me refresh my memory. I thought we had another half person going in here to help out. And I see another increase in.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. We had talked about some of the duties in the Community Development Division, especially on lien research and lien reviews as to whether or not it would stay there, code enforcement, or transfer over to the clerk. So we haven't. That would come forward in either mid-year budget adjustment or budget for next fiscal year. This reflects, as Pam stated, no changes in personnel.
Jenny, any big increases in requirements from the state or anything that's come out that's going to require more time this year?
No, not at this time. We try to watch the bills and things like that. Anita and I kind of work together, but not that I'm aware of at this point.
Okay. And the backup on our records and our archives, are they all safe in a place where we have a backup?
Yes. We were able to, you know, get rid of a lot of box records that, you know, after years unbeknownst to me or the city manager, and we kind of started finding out where things were. We were able to corral those and get them scanned in. Yes, they are backed up there in Laserfish. And we don't have too many. Travis, how many boxes do we have in the pods? That can be, there are records to be destroyed. But we don't have that many in the pods right at this point. So we're doing really good, yes.
Okay. So we're up to date? Is that what you're saying? We're almost up to date on that archives, on getting them all Laserfished in? Are we there or?
Well, yes and no. It is, we do our part. But as we said, Travis is working on a project right now with over 63,000 records. That's going to have to be scanned in. And then we will do a quality check on those records. They're in boxes right at this point. But as far as being, using the term up to date, yes, we're in compliance with the law and we're doing what we're supposed to do.
And there's a line on processing invoices. What invoices do you process?
Sierra, you want to speak on that a little bit?
So that would be our P-card invoices, travel for our department as well as city council. Supplies, miscellaneous things, stocking for meetings.
Just your, your department, right? No, no other invoices outside of your department?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to echo what the Vice Mayor said. Not only are you a great service, but there's nobody that has more professionalism than you guys. I don't care how far things go south. You guys are always very, very professional on the way you handle some of our issues. And that's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
The manager, any further questions? Any further input from the council?
I have a quick question. It doesn't actually have to do with that. I'm just curious. Where does the, the city attorney, is that a whole separate budget by itself? Or did I miss what's put into somebody else's? Pam's nodding. Okay. I'm just checking.
It's a separate department.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Well, seeing no further comment. Oh, yes, sir.
Council budget.
Council budget. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the final item this evening is the council budget. And as soon as we pull up the detail, we can go over that, at least for clarity for you all and the public. And there are some changes from previous years. So here is. That's not me yet. All right. So the first is personnel services, 49,900. That is for all of you. That is not per council member or elected official. I know that was an issue some time ago. So that's the cumulative amount. 1,100 in professional services for the all-covered server assist. 450 has been spent so far this year. Travel per DM, 7,933. Thank you. Has been spent so far. Printing and binding. Discretionary went up because you'll see 20,000 for community engagement. So that's where your huddles or whatever. It was an arbitrary number picked by me. Again, we talked about 3,000 per huddle, direct and indirect expenses. And then you have 15,600 of discretionary. That's a historic number to date. You have not used any of that discretionary funding or nothing's been billed against it. All other line items have some amount charged to it. 3,300 for miscellaneous, 1,800 for uniforms. You can see under your subscriptions and memberships, the League of Cities, League of Mayors, Florida League, South Lake Chamber. Adds up there. And then you have 16,400 for conferences and training. And only 2,600 has been spent under that category year-to-date. So your total budget is 13400 year-to-date. 49,000 has been spent against 110 or above 54.9%. Again, the only new thing would be the 20,000 for community engagement.
Okay. Ms. Fay?
I have no questions. No questions?
Vice Mayor?
Comment. Thank the Lord for the $20,000 in community engagement.
Okay. How does the, how does the labor for the huddles get transferred into here? And we have, I mean, the 3,000 was mostly labor, right?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a large degree of it was labor, if I recall, when we looked at the hours, especially Ashley spends the most hours. But this would allow for a kind of uniformity of application, meaning renting tents, podiums. We may charge transfer overtime. I'm not worried about salary employees. Ashley's hourly, so I worry about some of that. And then the public works and the parks and rec staff were hourly. So we would bill against that. It's a number, like I said, that I just kind of put in there and we can monitor. I would transfer, like I said, overtime, but not salaries to that number.
And the next step to help you out with, was it come, would it come before the council, the council meeting on how many we're going to do? And what, so that we can really put some meat under this bone and figure it out?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you could have some of that discussion. Again, you can't really make decisions since it wasn't agendaed and it's a workshop. But at a retreat or at a future meeting or during final budget adoption, where we could have a separate item on an upcoming council meeting.
Okay. Anything else? No?
Mike, would that also include that 20,000? Would that include perhaps like the trips to Tallahassee? Would that include perhaps like the trips to Tallahassee?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, no, that would be under travel. Although the rental bus, you could call engagement, so you're correct in that regard.
Thank you.
And the 16,000, we're not messing with that, right, on training and stuff, because we're, we have volunteers on, on, isn't it education and training? We haven't used any because we have a volunteer right here, level 01, 511.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the line item that has not been drawn against is discretionary, the 15,600. You have been using some expenses in education and training. The majority of the expenses have been under travel and per DIAM, but education and training, if you sign up for a class, you know, that has a fee associated with it, that would come out of that one.
I just want to make sure that we're handling the volunteer. Like if we were paying for our workshop, you know, Ms. Aiken and stuff like that, that is doing all this for nothing, you know, it's not ever going to be that way again, I think, and what is that worth, and is that in the budget?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that would probably come under my professional services.
Oh, okay. All right, seeing no more questions. Any public comment? All right, then, meeting is adjourned.